Okay, we will now reconvene the City Council Special Meeting. Are there any final actions? All right, we will now adjourn the City Council's Special Meeting and call to order the City Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, September 12th. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers of keynote.
Here.
John, Chirla.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
Rorba.
Here.
And Rodriguez.
Here. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any agenda updates?
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor. A revised staff report for Items 4 and 10 on tonight's agenda, a copy has been provided to you previously, and they are also available on the table in the back.
All right, thank you. Will the Clerk please call the next item?
Next item is Business from the Floor.
All right. Business from the Floor is a public's opportunity to address the City Council concerning any item within the City Council's jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. Please keep in mind that the City Council is generally prohibited from discussing or taking action on any items that is not on the agenda. Public comments are limited to no more than three minutes. Are there any Council, are there any public comments?
We have one blue speaker card for Bruce Kine.
Good evening, Bruce.
Good evening, Mayors of Council and may City Manager. I rise to talk to you tonight about my concern over fiscal problems facing the city. A number of us have been speaking to members of the community, and those members are also very concerned. We all know, based on the Mayor's, or excuse me, the City Manager's budget presentation that was approved 5-0 in May, that the city is facing a very concerning fiscal situation over the next coming years. I urge the City Council to address this issue head-on. It's time to bring it forward, talk about it in open session, and make a call to go somewhere. I know that all of you have different ideas about how to address it, from whether it's the reserves to other procurement issues, but let's get those out on the table and talk about them and call the question. When we've met with citizens groups, we've talked about whether a sales tax measure makes sense, and I think the City Council needs to address that at the same time the citizens are. For a citizen initiative, for a sales tax measure, it's a very heavy lift, 6,500 signatures, probably quarter million dollars, a lot of work. So then the question becomes really, should the citizens be doing that, or should we ask instead the City Council just to address it head-on? We all know we have a fiscal deficit problem looming, this year, next year, the following years. I don't believe that you can cut your way out of it. I don't believe you can economically develop your way out of it, and I think at some point you're going to have to call the question about revenue. And I know it's always hard to have those conversations, but I know all of you very, very well, and I believe that you all can address it in some fashion and decide what the options are. Does a sales tax measure make any sense at all? If so, should it be a general? Should it be a special? Is there TOT tax? Can some of those things, or some of the ideas that the Council have raised, should, you know, could they help in some fashion or another? So all I do is ask that, you know, for, on behalf of many dedicated residents who are really looking at this question hard and deciding whether they want to do that heavy lift themselves, or alternatively, should the City Council address it head-on and let the citizens have an opportunity to make their presentations as to what the Council may want to do? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other requests to speak?
No other requests for Business from the Floor.
Okay, will the Clerk please call the next item?
Next item is Scheduled Presentations. Item 1 is Proclamation of the City of Folsom for Claiming September 17 through 23, 2023 as Constitution Week in the City of Folsom.
Okay, and may I call Kim Richwine up to get the proclamation?
She's not here.
She's not.
But you're here.
There's four of us here representing her. Her daughter had twins.
Awesome.
Okay. Hello? Yeah, here we go.
All right, so, all right, this is a proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Folsom proclaiming September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week in the City of Folsom. On September 17, 1787, after four months of debate highlighted by sharp differences of views and by wise compromises, the outstanding leaders of our republic who were meeting in convention at Philadelphia signed the Constitution of the United States of America. And the story of the framing, signing, and adoption of that document constitutes one of the most significant chapters in the history of our country. It is fitting that every American should reflect upon the vision and fortitude of our forebears, our forebears in creating a charter designed to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessing of liberty for themselves and for the 42 millions who were to follow them as citizens of this nation. And for 236 years, America's Constitution has guided our growth and defined us as a nation of sacred laws and fundamental values. And Congress has requested that the President set aside the week beginning September 17 of each year as Constitution Week as a time for the contemplation and commemoration of the historic acts which resulted in the formation of our Constitution. Therefore, I, Rosario Rodriguez, Mayor of the City of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council, do hereby proclaim September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week in the City of Folsom.
Would you like to say a few words? Did anyone like to say a few words?
No.
Thank you.
We just want to say thank you very much.
Sure, okay, all right, thank you. Oh, absolutely. All right, will the Clerk please call the next item?
Next item is Proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Folsom proclaiming the month of September 2023 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Folsom.
Mr. Montgomery, come on up. Here we are once again, Richard Montgomery.
I see.
You too. And thank you to my colleagues who graciously allowed me to be the one to present this every year in memory of my father, who died of prostate cancer in 2010. So this is a proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Folsom proclaiming the month of September 2023 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, whereas prostate cancer is the most frequently diagnosed cancer in men and the second-leading cause of cancer deaths in men, and whereas the American Cancer Society estimates there will be over 288,000 new cases of prostate cancer in the USA in 2023, and whereas it is estimated that almost 27,000 California men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer this year, and that an estimated 5,000 of those men will die from this disease this year, and whereas the five-year survival rate approaches 100% when prostate cancer is diagnosed and treated early, but drops to 32% when it spreads to the other parts of the body, and whereas the American Cancer Society recommends that men have a conversation with their healthcare provider and make informed decisions about whether to be tested for prostate cancer, and whereas the City of Folsom joins communities across our nation to increase the awareness about the importance of early detection, testing, and treatment for prostate cancer. Now therefore, on behalf of Mayor Rosario Rodriguez and the Folsom City Council, we do hereby proclaim the month of September 2023 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Folsom to increase awareness about the importance of early detection and treatment of this disease, proclaim this 12th day of September 2023. Thanks for being here again.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and Lydia, for putting this together year after year. Appreciate that. There's a lot of where-ases when you get into these things with the cancer societies and what have you. I've been doing this a long time in that I handle the Cameron Park Prostate Support Group, and I participate with the Sacramento Groups. Anyhow, the thing about getting with your doctor and having a discussion, I get a little excited about them being so tactful about it. Realistically, men need to get tested. It's a very simple blood test when you get a physical. It's not an expensive item, it's not a heartbreaker. If you're afraid of needles, grin and bear it. So, as I said, it's this very simple blood test, it's the only thing that can help you out, get you started. Start it early, get a benchmark test, get it done annually. It's a number you need to watch, it's just like taking your temperature. Little different, but same thing. Anyhow, back when I was diagnosed, you didn't have choices of treatments. You do today, and the sooner you decide, get that place, the better off you can be. I've only lost in 25 years maybe two guys who were diagnosed metastatic from the get-go, and both of them lasted eight to 10 years before something else contributed to their passing. Other than that, get tested. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Will the Clerk please call the next item?
Next item is Resolution of Commendation Honoring Snook's Chocolate Factory. Oh, did I miss one? Oh, sorry. Proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Folsom proclaiming September as International Underground Railroad Month in the City of Folsom.
Awesome. Thank you. Harris family. This is about, thank you again for being here. The proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Folsom proclaiming September as International Underground Rail Month. I know there's a lot of work has been gone through, whereas the Underground Railroad played a critical role in the fight against the cruel institution of slavery, offering hope and sanctuary to the countless men, women, and children who earned for the liberty, and it survived, the testament to the enduring human spirit. And whereas the Underground Railroad is an international story and civil rights moment, whereas, and everywhere slavery existed, there were efforts to escape, and whereas September has been designated as the International Underground Railroad Month to honor the legacy of the Underground Railroad, celebrate the resilience of those who escaped the slavery, and endure our community about this essential chapter in our history. And whereas today, we recognize, renew, and rejuvenate the efforts of the many people in California and throughout the world who decided, who dedicated their lives in keeping the memory of the Underground Railroad alive through the National Parks Services, National Underground Railroad Network, to freedom and UNESCO's site of memory and designation. And whereas the City of Folsom recognizes that history must be acknowledged, understood, and remembered to ensure that we continue strive for the more just equitability and inclusive society where all individuals are treated with dignity and respect. Now therefore, I, YK Chalamet Chirla, on behalf of our Mayor Rodriguez and the City Council Members and the Council, do hereby proclaim the September 2023 as International Underground Railroad Month in the City of Folsom, proclaiming this on the 12th day of September 2023. Thank you again, and thank you for all the services you have done throughout the generations.
Can I get a photo of you guys looking up here? Smile.
Oh. I don't know who is talking.
There you go, all right, got it.
Please.
It is a special blessing to not only live in this community, but probably 55 years, you know, seeing things and experiencing things in this community that most people shouldn't have to experience. But the beauty is, especially for the children, we don't have to go through all that negative stuff. We could, we could tell the history without dredging up the negative, but we have to tell the truth of what happened. And so, part of how we do this, because when they took away our culture during the transatlantic slave trade, that is something that we continue to bring back in a good way. And so this, I mean, this book here is like 500 pounds, it's the Underground Railroad to the funk, and some of you may have heard the Funkadelics, this is the bride, the queen of funk is with us tonight. And so Donna, would you say a few words? And make it funky.
So honored to be here this evening. Michael is another fine man, she got me. He invited me down. Yes, I did write a book. I believe it's a divine order of things that it happens to be the Underground Railroad to the funk. First of all, to let you know, it's, it's an art form, it's a music. I work with groups such as Sly and the Family Stone, I don't know if you've heard of him, probably Funkadelic, the Gap Band, I work with the Erythmics, Annie Lennox, just the list goes on and on and on. When I was seven years old, my mother, returning home from the library, looked extremely distraught, and I didn't know what was wrong, and she said to me out of the blue, "300 million African bones line the ocean floor." I was confused, I didn't know what she meant. It's like, how is that possible? How did that happen? And she said to me, "One day you will understand." So, here we go. Then I started writing this book, I started writing everything down that she told me, so I kept a diary since I was in the third grade. And I wrote down another story where it starts off as whole indigenous nations melted away like snowballs in the sun, but not all perished. Many escaped and found refuge in the great Smoky Mountains along the North Carolina borders and Tennessee. One of the survivors was named Red Stick, and he was a survivor. Red Stick basically hid from the militia who brutally, who he said murdered his entire family, but he lived up in those bluffs up there in the Rocky Mountains, and then one day he came down from the higher bluffs and he saw this woman lying on the ground drinking water from a bubbling stream. Back in those days, waters used to bubble up out of the ground, it was icy cold and early fresh. Many of us don't know anything about that, I know I don't, but there was a lady also that he looked at, a young woman, and she had long hair, and it wasn't bound in cloth, it hung like thick black ropes, and she picked up this strange instrument and she started plucking. It was a banjo, and he heard those sounds before and was engaging. So, those two people actually got married, her name was Rilla Rice, had many treasures, and in those days, she had many treasures, they had hot, cold-watered stoves, and they had chickens, and they had pigs. So she used to hide Red Stick in the walls of her cabins, because the militia was still looking for him, and he crouched down the side of those walls for many, many, many years, and his knees went bad. But one day they got married. So her name was Rilla Rice, and Red Stick, Tu Sogali, they were my great-great-grandparents. So one day I decided to write a book, and I put it to music, and basically from the stories that my parents shared with me in terms of the Underground Railroad, and I believe it's the divine order of things, I didn't know I was going to be here today to share this story with you and this book that actually happens to be on the bestsellers list right now. So it is totally an honor to be here in Folsom, I am from Sacramento, I went to school, I was raised and born here, been on the road for actually 35 years, this is my final legacy. And to be here today to receive the Underground Railroad proclamation for Folsom is more prestigious and more honorable than I can ever tell you. So thank you for having us here today.
Picture with you?
Yeah, they'll take pictures.
Tell them where you find the book?
Oh.
Oh, I forgot.
I forgot, I'm so nervous, I am nervous. Now, you know, I sing in front of hundreds, a thousand people, this is actually the most woo nervous I think I've ever been, because I've never done this before, this is all brand-new to me, so. You can buy this book actually on dawn silva.com, or you can actually go to the Underground Books over there in Oak Park, right? Is that the name of it? Underground Bookstore.
They know who Jeff is.
Okay.
And maybe Judy, we'll figure it out.
What's, what's the title again? Can you repeat the title for the TV audience?
It's called The Funk Queen.
Thank you.
And this one is actually, is going into Folsom, this one is on the House, so I don't know who this one goes to, so.
Our library director is right back there.
The library directory, who is that?
Thank you.
This is your book.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely, this is your book. It was seven pounds, it's also a coffee table book, it's got like 300 photos in here from all the groups I work with, so. Ah, here we go.
What number is it?
Number 889? No, 890.
Okay, 890.
Thank you.
Oh, I should say, what, it's not to him, it's to the library.
The Folsom Library.
Folsom Library. Yeah, that's $100, well over the minimum.
She mentioned Gap Band.
Ma'am?
Yes, yes, sir.
If you can present to the library director.
I'm gonna get him inside. I'm gonna stand by you. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Will the Clerk please call the next item?
Now we have Presentation of the, no, not that one either, Resolution of Commendation Honoring Snook's Chocolate Factory on their 60th anniversary.
All right, so will the Swedish family in Folsom please meet me on the floor? All right, are you ready? So here we have the second, third, and fourth generation of the Snook family, Renee and Jim, Alicia, Grace, Nora, James, Alex, Daniel, and Michael Snook. So, what is that?
Well, he's kind of a Snook, but it's Kelly.
Oh, okay, Kelly, right, 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 right.
He's our voice.
All right, so the City of Folsom Resolution of Commendation Honoring Snook's Candy Factory on their 60th anniversary, whereas Snook's Candies, an operation since 1963, is a beloved part of our Folsom community, whereas Renee and Jim and their family and valued staff over the past four decades continue upon the foundation established by John and Jeannie Snook in 1963. Snook's Candies has been bringing generations of Snooks into the business and now operates with four generations of Snook family, who have left their mark on the hearts of Folsom community and beyond with both their candy and their generosity. Snook's Candies has been honored as the best of countless times by local newspapers, magazines, and a variety of regional publications. Snook's Candies are generous donors of goods and volunteer of time in the historic district. On the 60th anniversary of Snook's Candies, the Folsom community would like to extend their heartfelt appreciation and sincere congratulations to Snook's Candies for the countless hours, hard work, sacrifices, and dedication that it takes to run a successful business. Now therefore, I, Rosario Rodriguez, Mayor for the City of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council and the Folsom community, to hereby thank the Snook family for in immeasurable happy moments, special events, and celebration that they have been a part of. And so as a, as a fellow business owner in the historic district, I am just truly honored to be next to you guys and to watch how hard you guys work and what you give back to the community, and your dad was an inspiration to so many businesses, because it is not easy to business, but you're, you have been such an integral part of helping business owners, encouraging them, and just working hard to really form positive relationships, so thank you. Would you like to say a few words and share a little bit about your Friday night event? Yeah. And actually, who are, who wants one of those?
Okay. Well, Mayor Rodriguez, thank you so much, and it's, it's great being your neighbor on Sutter Street, and thank you to this Council and our City Manager and Christine Brainard also for all your participation with us. I would just like to say, a quote from my dad years ago said, "I think it took more guts than brains to open this business." And he did it on 500 bucks back in 1963, so a lot of the equipment he, he secured to open his first Country Candies, was the original name, was on a handshake, so it was pretty cool. But I would just like, in addition, I'd just like to say, it's amazing that we actually chose Folsom to move our business back in 1985. Our lease in Sacramento had about three years left, and we needed a place. And the owner of the Hacienda Building had just priorly bought it, he had a business up in Tahoe where my folks had their business, we were running the Sacramento store, and he came into my dad one day and said, "Hey, I just bought this building in Folsom, you should come look at it to open a store." And my dad's response was, "Why would I want to open in that dinky little town of Folsom?" And so anyways, we did, and it was rough, so anybody that's run a small business, it's a lot of work, and we had our challenges, but we couldn't do it without all the family. We had a lot of family help along the way, Renee and I just, it was tough, so we, we've persevered, and actually, one of our first dates, we went up to Folsom Lake and we ended up walking down Sutter Street, it was getting dark, nothing was open, but it was like one of our first dates and we were window shopping, and a couple of years later, we were married and opened in Folsom, so that, that's kind of neat. And Renee, do you want to say anything?
It takes, of course, a lot of family, a lot of sacrifice, but without, with just us, that's, that's a big piece of it, but without the community, without the city, and everything that the city has done for us to help us be a success and help us grow as a small family business, can't do it without, you guys can't do it without these guys and everybody else in the surrounding areas. So it's not just one, it's a community, it's a family, so thank you to everybody who's supported us.
Yeah, I actually wanted to add one more thing, just a random experience that happened probably 10 years ago, I was making a peanut brittle, and we had this picture on the wall, and it was on Sutter Street, and it was the first telephone, it was the first telephone on Sutter Street, and this old guy, he was walking down with a cane, we go to the restroom, and he stops and he looks at the picture and he goes, "That's my mom." And I was like, "What?", and so I had to stop over there, and I ran, I'm like, "Did you just say that was your mother?", he's like, "That's my mother, that's the first telephone in Folsom." And it was just, it was just interesting, I don't know where that picture is, but, you know, it was just cool to see, you know? I mean, I was born in 85, so when we moved to Folsom, so I've kind of, I've seen a lot of ch- I've seen a lot of change, development, and gotten to interact with a lot of people. And everybody's been great here, so, and, uh, but, uh, we are having our sixtieth anniversary on Friday. The ribbon cutting is at six?
Cutting at six sharp.
And then we're having the concert, um, at the amphitheater. It was a fundraiser, so, um, I think you can go on our website and get tickets there.
Yeah, there's a link to, if you, it's a Creedence Clearwater, uh, Bob Seeger Tribute Band. Really good, um, so we sponsored it and we've actually secured a couple of other sponsors. But it's to benefit the green room right behind there, which will be the new Peter Lewis Green Room. Um, so, um, we have to do a lot of rehab to that building, so that it's going to help with that.
And all proceeds are going?
All proceeds go to.
Yeah, all, it's a, yeah. Hundred percent fundraiser.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let me, let me move this back.
Thank you, everybody.
Cooperate.
Even the little man, good job, buddy.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Will the clerk please call the next item?
Next item is Scheduled Presentations, Item Five, Presentation of the Tenth Annual Folsom Community Service Day.
Yeah.
Come on down.
It's my first time. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Tom Hellman, Parks and Recreation Department, and Lead Staff Member for the Tenth Annual Folsom Community Service Day. Uh, without further ado, I'm going to step aside because this really is a community-led event with staff support from the City of Folsom. So I'd like to turn it over to our Chair of the Steering Committee, Justin Rathel, to take you through what's coming up here on Saturday at Lakeside Church. My shirt, she's dancing, it's a nice shirt.
Yeah, that's right.
Mayor, Members of the Council, thank you so much for entertaining our presentation this evening. We're super excited for Saturday. Uh, just want to give you a little background. Most of you have been out there on Saturday morning and know the excitement that's coming up, uh, starting at Lakeside. Uh, first off, I'd like to thank our committee members that put in so much time and effort over the last six months, uh, putting together all the projects. Uh, I won't read them out by name, but I'll, I'll show them. We've got great staff support, uh, members of the business community, members of the nonprofit community, uh, members of the school district, uh, just folks from all areas of the city, um, showing up uh, and putting their all into the Steering Committee to make sure that this event, uh, goes off smoothly on Saturday. So I want to thank all of those, those individuals.
So Justin, at our last, um, meeting, at Council Comments, I shared a bit about coming into the meeting and seeing all the intricate pieces that go into, um, making these, say, possible. And it is a lot of work. Yeah, so, great job.
Thank you. Uh, so Saturday, uh, we will be out there. The kickoff does begin at eight AM, uh, registrat-, or check-in is right before that. Uh, we've got over two thousand volunteers. Um, and right now we're sitting at ninety-three percent of the volunteer spots filled. Uh, that means we have seven percent of the volunteer spots that still need to be filled. So those of you that are listening out there in the community or seeing this, um, online, uh, hop on to folsomcommunitieservice.org and you can still find a project to volunteer on Saturday. Uh, we're going to move the celebration back inside, uh, this Saturday. This is a picture from a few years ago, a nice maskless picture, uh, here of Service Day. Uh, we've had the kickoff outside, uh, for a number of years now. Uh, but we are moving it back inside, uh, so we can get another one of these great pictures with updated shirts. Uh, you will notice, uh, also, uh, with our tenth anniversary, uh, we have these great tie-dye shirts, uh, showing up. Uh, one of the biggest challenges we have with Community Service Day, we always have huge support, um, for sponsors. We have huge support, um, for volunteers. Um, but we always struggle to find enough team leads, uh, or project leads to put these projects together ahead of time and really execute that day of. So we wanted to do something special, um, for them and really make them stand out. And really, hopefully, on year eleven of Community Service Day, everybody's going, "How do I get one of those cool tie-dye shirts?" "Oh, you can become a project lead, you can run a project next year." So it's a little bit of, uh, a little bit of strategy on the shirt planning. Uh, we also want to make our team leads and project leads stand out. Uh, they get a little extra information and briefing, so members of the community can go to them uh, and get their questions easily answered, uh, and make it run smoothly on Saturday. Our presenting sponsors, uh, we have Intel and Dignity Health coming in at the fifteen thousand dollar level. Really appreciate, uh, those companies, uh, been with us for many years and we appreciate their support. Our visionary sponsors, we've got Lakeside, Folsom Times, Style Media Group, and Lennar. Our leader sponsors, we've got the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, the Folsom Telegraph, and the Rotary Club of Folsom. Our partner sponsors, we've got Habitat for Humanity of Greater Sacramento, Kaiser Permanente, Kikiman, Elliott Homes, uh, Doc and Engineering, Winco Foods, and American Logo wear. Our good neighbor sponsors, we've got Ace Hardware, Choose Folsom, Safe Credit Union, uh, the Sierra Marlins, Big Wave Coffee House, uh, and Sensational Aesthetics. So we've got over a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars of sponsorship for cash and in-kind sponsors. Uh, definitely our biggest sponsor year to date, uh, so we really appreciate the support of all those, all those folks making it happen. Uh, we've got too many projects to list on one slide, but we did our best, um, tried to kind of group them together so you could see what everyone's going to be doing on Saturday. Uh, we've got trail, uh, projects, we've got park projects, uh, we've got nonprofit projects, we've got some public safety projects, uh, school projects, uh, just all over, uh, the city. You will see those shirts out, uh, uh, doing great work on Saturday morning, so. Uh, just kind of named some of those that, that are at the parks. We Limby, Natoma Station Pond, Ernie Sheldon Youth Sports, VT Collins has been, they've got some great projects going on for the last couple of years, and Young Moose Cemetery. So just wanted to, to kind of give you a taste of what all those projects are. Uh, Neighbors Helping Senior Projects, uh, we have seventy-three projects, uh, providing help to our senior residents. So if you look at the thirty-five projects here and the seventy-three projects here, you can do some math there and see that we are now over a hundred projects, uh, going into Community Service Day. Last over, Citywide Food Drive, this is by far our biggest project. It's five hundred plus volunteers, actually multiple days of service because you got to think, somebody dropped, uh, those bags on your doorsteps, which I'm sure you've all, you've all gotten. Uh, we do ask that those bags be out at eight, by eight AM. I'm sure you've seen the signs around your neighbor, neighborhood, um, reminding everybody to get their bags out early. Uh, and just a little, uh, fun math, if every Folsom household donates one bag of groceries, we can feed Folsoms hungry for one year. So, uh, great work to all those folks, um, and especially, uh, the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. They're a big, uh, push behind the food drive, uh, going forward. But it takes all sorts of groups to bring this, this together and bring it home. The Donation Drive, uh, the Donation Drive, uh, go through what we're looking for on Saturday. We'll have drop-off points at Lakeside Church there in the morning. Uh, we are looking for bicycles for both children and adults, uh, glasses, yarn and fabric, coats, shelter pet supplies, purses, uh, toys, and hygiene items and gift wrap supplies. So this, uh, will be posted out online many times, uh, but just, just another reminder that we could use, different nonprofit groups throughout the community could use these different items uh, to help meet the needs of our residents. We're also having a blood drive again this year, uh, ten thirty AM to two PM. Uh, there's a QR code there if anyone needs to sign up to donate blood. Uh, or also they can go to folsomcommunitieservice.org and find that information to sign up to vote, to donate. So ten years, uh, I want to give a shout out to Brian Wallace, uh, also for designing our logos again this year. Also want to give a shout out to Sandy Economy for being here tonight, uh, as our representative of the Steering Committee. So we will see you guys Saturday morning. Uh, thank you so much for allowing us to do this for the community. Uh, we look forward to another great year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, will the clerk please call the next item?
Next item is the Consent Calendar.
All right, are there any items to pull?
I'll move approval of the consent items six through ten.
Is there a second?
I second.
All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Zacino?
Yes.
Chell and Charla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Lorba?
Yes.
And Rodriguez.
Yes. Right, will the clerk please call the next item?
Next item is New Business, Item Eleven, Landmark Tree Update, Urban Forester, Recommendations to Establish Two New Landmark Growth Designations.
Hello, Amy.
Good evening. It gets hot and cold, I know. All right, good evening, Mayor Rodriguez, Members of the Council, and City Manager. I'm Amy Nunez, I am your Urban Forester, and I am here before you tonight to provide an update on, um, two specific candidates for consideration to add to our landmark tree registry. So, oops, how do I?
Amy, sometimes it's easier to use just the arrow key so that you can... The mouse can be a little finicky.
It'll, it'll go, Pam.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So, um, a really quick, just rapid-fire recap. Our Landmark Tree Program was initiated in nineteen ninety-six. It was active for about three years and then went dormant for over twenty. Uh, recently, we have kind of initiated a revival effort, starting last year where we added our first tree in twenty-three years. Um, this tree you see here, it's a beautiful interior live oak on the Cal ISO property. Um, the picture doesn't really do it justice, there's not any size reference, but the cumulative, uh, DBH is over a hundred inches. Um, and then also, this year, we added a beautiful valley oak on Sibley Street and then another live oak on Blue Ravine. So our Landmark Tree Registry was created to recognize trees of particular, um, presence, uh, trees that are really remarkable and meet at least one of these four findings. Uh, historical value, um, outstanding habitat, unusual species, and superior beauty. Trees are, um, a phenomenal environmental asset, um, for both property value and, um, human health. The Landmark Tree Program was designed to kind of recognize those trees that really add to our distinctive by nature adage. One of the benefits of having a landmark tree is that the city will actually help with consulting and possibly even maintenance of your tree. And then also, um, to remove a tree from the landmark registry, excuse me, um, the city council has to approve the declassification of that tree. So the process for actually getting a designation for a landmark tree can go two ways. A property owner or an interested party can submit an application. Alternately, the city council on its own motion can initiate the process to, um, designate a tree without an application and without the fee. And tonight, it will be that, that latter avenue that we're exploring with these two candidates.
Just really quick, I have a question. So if, can somebody recommend a tree, uh, to be landmark if it's not on their property?
Yes. So the way it works is if we receive an application from an interested party, um, there is a thirty-day mandatory, uh, kind of like a noticing period. So we receive the application, I would present the findings to you at, um, a, a council meeting. And then the city council would, um, move to initiate that process. And then through that thirty-day noticing, um, the property owner, the tree owner, would have the ability to, uh, appeal that application if they were not interested.
What if it's on government property?
Like city property?
Like city property.
Um, it would kind of be the same, the same process.
All right, thank you.
So candidate number one is, um, a pretty remarkable oak woodland on the state prison property at three hundred Prison Road. Uh, the woodland can kind of be divided into two distinct groves, uh, west and east. Together, they amount to two hundred and fifty acres of, of canopy. Um, and species distribution is primarily blue oak with some interior live and then even some other natives like elderberry and, um, buckeye and some willows. Uh, I would suggest that this grove does qualify for historical value. They do, the, the woodlands do surround the prison, which was built in the eighteen hundreds. A lot of these trees are very old, older than a hundred and fifty years old. Um, outstanding habitat value, um, I can vouch for this. I had the opportunity to actually go on a tour of the site. Um, Lieutenant, or Correctional Lieutenant Chad Deal, um, drove me around. We ran into several deer, lots of birds. And then he also told me that the University of California is actually conducting research and tracking a bobcat that calls these groves, um, its home. And then also superior beauty, I don't think that can be argued. Um, this here is the view from East Natoma Street, kind of iconic too, I would say, distinctive by nature here in Folsom.
And it looks really, uh, I, I love the look of it when the cows are in there. That's a great look.
And this is, uh, a view from, uh, Prison Road. And then this was just some fun I was having with our associate planner, Nathan Stroud, um, kind of playing around with the east grove and the west grove and dividing them into zones. Um, the interior, uh, zone being kind of habitat value, outer zone being, you know, what's visible from the right-of-way and the trails with potential opportunities. And then maybe even an expansion zone where, um, maybe future plantings can take place and leveraging our partnership with the Sacramento Tree Foundation. And so considerations, uh, the city has been in contact with the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation. And CDCR has been very amenable to the prospect of adding these trees to our landmark tree registry. I would say even excited. And they didn't, um, seem to oppose either to the possibility of my expansion zone idea. Um, so, uh, also, the three out of the four findings, I would say, are met with these woodlands and also financial impact to the city. We would be waiving the application fee, uh, annual staff time. They would kind of have, um, access to me to consult on trees near the right-of-ways, near, near the trails. Um, and then also, you know, going back to potential tree planting opportunities. So that kind of concludes what I have for candidate one. There aren't any questions or comments, I'll move on to candidate two.
Is this the first time that we've reached out to CDCR about, um, about putting these trees into a landmark status?
Yes, this year, just recently, was, was our first, um, outreach to them. And they were, like I said, very, very open and excited about adding this, um, to our registry.
All right, thank you.
Candidate number two is actually a trail segment here in Folsom called the Oak Parkway, Parkway Trail. Um, the segment we're looking at here is the part that's owned by the city. Uh, it spans a mile and a half. There's also another half-mile segment owned by PG&E. And the species distribution here, again, primarily oak, blue oak, interior live oak. There are also two recorded oracle oaks, uh, very small, but, um, it is noteworthy because they are kind of a rare species. They are a hybrid between our native interior live oak and our native, uh, California black oak. Um, so again, habitat value would be a qualifier here. Oaks are a great habitat for pollinating insects, migratory birds, um, and, you know, hawks. I've seen multiple times walking this corridor. Uh, superior beauty, um, even though there are, this corridor is kind of more sporadic clusters of trees, there are some noteworthy handsome oaks, uh, sporadically interspersed through this, uh, one and a half mile stint. And then again, going back to that oracle oak, unusual species. So here are just some pictures of, um, the corridor. As you can see, PG&E and Smud have, uh, transmission line easements through here, so they do have to come in annually to do vegetation management. And they do have some state requirements for clearance for their lines. Um, so on the left here is just kind of an example of a standalone tree. On the right here is an example of one of the noteworthy clusters of mature trees. And then just some considerations here, um, we do have multiple stakeholders at play here in this corridor. We've got trail users, and then we also have the utility companies. And that, I, like, again, they come through every year, they give us a work scope proposal, and then there's kind of some back and forth in that review process. And they don't move forward until. And they don't move forward until the city approves their, their work scope. And then again, the canopy is sporadic. Unlike the prison grove, the corridor itself is not one grove, it's clusters here and there of singular trees or small groups of trees. And then we also have ranges in size from brush all the way up to 40-inch mature oak trees. One of the problems, or I would say obstacles, is that a few of younger trees are directly under these transmission lines. So PG&E does have to come in every year and do some pruning. And oftentimes, there is a little bit of removal involved with that. So, impacted the city, again, we would be waiving the fee and then we would also need to, I would say we kind of need to further analyze our relationship with stakeholders, both the community members and those utility companies that have to come through each year. So, all that is to say that the Oak Parkway Trail Corridor is kind of a work in progress. So, this presentation to you tonight is meant to be kind of a status update. So at this time, I would suggest that council allow staff to continue to work and analyze this corridor. Friends of Folsom Parkway has actually offered to assist with potentially an inventory to kind of help, help us maybe hone in on some parameters that are mutually beneficial for a future recommendation for landmark tree status. So with that, staff recommendation is to initiate the 30-day noticing period for the prison grove. And then, at the October 24th city council meeting, adopt by resolution that grove into our landmark tree registry. And then, for the Oak Parkway Trail Corridor, allow staff to continue analyzing possibilities, working with Friends of Folsom Parkway, and develop parameters for a potential landmark tree recommendation at a later date.
Amy, I have a couple of comments. Are you finished there?
Yes, that concludes.
So, a couple of weeks ago, I shared about a meeting we had with PG&E and I shared some feedback with the public on how PG&E set up a meeting with you, the city manager, myself, and I can't remember who else was in it.
Pam.
Was it Pam, okay. And I left pleasantly surprised at their wanting to work with the, the city of Folsom to continue to build a relationship. And this is coming after two years of them, two years ago where they came in and said, "This is what we're going to do," and then we ended up having to work very hard at creating a relationship with them. And I just left really encouraged that PG&E genuinely wants to work with our community. What we, what we value is something that they want to value and so that relationship was, I mean, I left there just feeling really good about, about their intentions. But, so it's been two years that we have been going down this path and we're, and, you know, I think for a while there, I'm not sure what kind of held things up, but here we are two years, I agree with the prison ground. But the area on Oak Avenue Parkway Trail Corridor between the Willow Creek Drive near the water treatment plant, which is right behind my house, and Willow Creek Drive at BT Collins. There, there may not be a grove, but there are several trees. And so where I take it personal is the one tree that got taken down right behind my, right behind my, my neighborhood. It was, and I mean, when you talk about superior beauty, it was probably one of the most beautiful oak trees that may have been in Folsom. And since then, I, you know, I mean, I can't say that I was much of a, I wouldn't consider myself much of a tree hugger person before that. But after that tree got taken down and you realize the history and the value of these trees, it was personal. So, I have a great interest to see those trees, for us to do something about it. And even if it's, even if it's taking a map and identifying where those trees are and setting them up under the landmark tree so that they are protected, even for our own public sake and for our own, you know, knowledge that they would be protected. I, I just have a great interest to, to see that done ASAP. Just because we've been here for almost two years now, talking about the same conversation and setting up a plan and, and, and it just, just, we're kind of in the same place and two years ago.
Well, so I do echo the, the sentiment coming out of that PG&E meeting recently. And I'll also say that, yeah, we have come a long way in our relationship with that particular stakeholder and, you know, we've kind of evolved from a place of combativeness to collaboration. And, you know, it's been really uplifting to kind of see that change in them. I also agree that, I also share that sentiment about that specific tree. And that was probably kind of the catalyst that started us on this journey with them. And through more analysis and working with the Friends of Folsom Parkway and those stakeholders, I do anticipate that that is exactly what will, that, that's what the outcome will be. You know, this presentation was meant to be an update. And, yeah, the prison property is kind of, it's basically gift wrapped with a bow on it right now. Spectacular and the, the agents of the prison grounds have been just so excited about this prospect. So, and yeah, again, the, the trail corridor is a work in progress, but staff doesn't tend to come back to this council at a future date to recommend pretty much exactly what you've, what you've just laid out right now. We just need to go back, we need to look at those trees and come up with a map that shows where they're located and maybe come up with some categories of, you know, those areas directly under the sag of the lines. Kind of, the, kind of similar to the zones I came up with with the prison grove, maybe we can kind of work with something in, in that vein, to come up with something to overlay over the Parkway, the Oak Parkway Trail.
And one of the messages I got from PG&E is even if there's a tree that might be, you know, out of, out of, out of line, I don't know what the terminology is, but they'll work at trimming it instead of wanting to cut it. Do you think 60 days would be a good timeframe to get that done? To do a mapping of that corridor?
Better question. Is it necessary to do that in advance of us designated, designating the Oak Parkway Trail Corridor as a landmark grove? Since, since our discussion last Friday, I've softened my opinion about having to like have a hard and fast definition of what, what consists of, what makes it a grove. I think it's city property, the public made absolutely clear that they would like those trees to be protected. This gives us one more tool in our toolbox to protect them and I think using a broad brush to say the entire property is a grove and should be protected, I think is appropriate. So I'd suggest that you just bring back all three groves at the same time. And then whatever investigation you need to do, continue with that to more carefully map it with the help of the Friends of Folsom Parkway, but for our purposes, I think we can, I, I could designate all three of them in one go.
The obstacle I see with that is each year PG&E comes through and there are a few areas along that corridor where we've got young, young trees sprouting, trees that are just a few years old, that are about six inches, seven inches in diameter, directly under the lines. And designating the entire corridor would, according to the, the word of the code, would require city council to make a motion to declassify those specific trees each year. So for example, right now, they have submitted a proposed work scope. Along the Oak Parkway Trail, they're proposing to remove 17 trees, oak trees. I have sent them back comments that several of the trees appear to be able to be pruned reasonably, but there are, I would say about 10 to 12 trees that are directly under the lines that I have a hard time arguing that need to be removed. And these trees are primarily 10 inches in diameter and smaller. And so that would be the one obstacle I would see with that and that's kind of why, you know, the Oak, the trail corridor isn't quite as, it's a little messy.
Clearly it is and i- in my mind, having been part of that original negotiation to try and get them to the table, that negotiation's going to happen regardless of what we, what action we take with regard to landmark status. I think identifying the grove and then, to your point, identifying what is the absolutely high-value parts of the grove and which parts we're trying to protect against PG&E unnecessarily cutting trees down. I think that is work that will be, it could happen in more detail and then it's going to be an ongoing process regardless, so.
So let me interject here, because, so if we were to designate that area as a landmark tree grove and PG&E wanted to do some trimming, they would be allowed to do that the way that I read the code, correct?
Yes.
But if they wanted to remove a particular tree, you're saying that we would have to declassify that tree to where it was no longer a landmark tree? But, doesn't that, wouldn't that be a reason to declare it a landmark grove? If you're saying they want to take out some trees that you don't think are warranted, well, isn't this putting another layer of protection in there that says, "Well, actually, that's a landmark tree and we need to go to the city council and have them declassify that if, if that's what you want to have happen." It seems like-
That would be the avenue that would have to happen if we, we did it that way. If we just put a blanket classification over the whole, at least the city-owned portion of the corridor.
But, I, I think ultimately that's what we want, right? And we, we want to make it a little bit harder for them to, to do it and to really show that it's justified and that is, they're not just coming in clear-cutting to make it easier on them so they don't have to come do any maintenance.
Ultimately, you know, PG&E has like done a complete about-face in terms of their position and their willingness to, you know, sort of work together on this problem. But ultimately, the CPUC doesn't care what we designate as a landmark tree at all. They only concern, they're only concerned about safety. So at some point, the only tool that we have in our toolbox is to call PG&E on the carpet and making the tree more valuable means that when we do that, the coverage of the situation is more intense. So that's how we got them to the negotiating table in the first place, is by tell, you know, making it public that they were being capricious in their work. So, I, that's why I'm saying the geographic area can be considered a grove. The details of what we can tolerate in terms of trimming and cutting, I think you can develop that as time goes by.
I guess one comment I would add, and Amy and I talked about this a little bit, is if we take this example of a grove that includes a lot of mature, protected, high-value oak trees interspersed with smaller scrub, volunteer, and sometimes unhealthy trees and we say it's all a landmark grove, because we intend to provide an extra layer of protection, what's to keep us from doing that everywhere in the city? It kind of defeats the purpose of having a landmark grove.
Have to decide, or whoever's sitting in these chairs has to make those rulings, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that, you know, historically, the landmark registry and status has been something of a very high value and, and the idea that we had was to do it more surgically, obviously it's the city council's decision, but that was a concern that we discussed was, you know, having now many, many applications for this same, you know, area and saying it's all got an extra layer of protection, not that it has the status of landmark, we just want more protection regardless of what kind of trees they are or whether they meet all of the qualifications.
Let me be more clear, let me be more clear in my point. I'm saying that that area should be designated as a landmark grove. I am not saying that every single tree within a grove is of extreme high value. I'm saying I'm, I'm willing to trust our urban forester to make a map of what is high value, what is trimmable, what will be high value in the future, that's all. And I don't need to have that map to say that that area is one that I want to protect for the future.
So you want the map, you want them to do the map before we, in 30 days before we would actually approve it as a final-
I could decide tonight to call that a grove and that it's a landmark grove, I don't need the map. I trust that our staff can create that.
You don't need the map, but we would need 30 days, right, to notice it like you're doing with the Folsom prison property, right? So, in the meantime, you could develop a map, we don't have to look at it.
Yeah.
Right, but with Folsom Parkway or something, you could develop the map and those areas that will probably need cleanup later, you could identify early and, I mean, is that something that's doable?
Creating the map, yes, in, in 30 days.
No, no, not, not in 30 days, but I think, you know-
That's why I'm saying I don't need that to take the action.
Yeah, I think that, you know, we hear you and then what I think maybe we, we've already planned to come back to the city council with some tweaks to the tree preservation ordinance and, and this may be something that we're able to address, you know, changes to how we proceed with those landmark groves in a way that kind of aligns with this direction, you know, in the future, so.
Is, is the process the same where, I mean, I understand the prison, you, you, it's, you know, government, another government agency, so you're putting it out there and giving them an opportunity to say, "No, we don't want you to do this" or whatever, right? Which, we don't think they're going to do that. But, but when it's city-owned property and we're the one making the request, do we have to, do you have to still do that whole noticing thing? I mean, what, a member of the public's going to say they don't want it or?
If I, if I may clarify something real quick, I'm not entirely sure it's city-owned property we're talking about.
The extent of the grove for my purposes is the city-owned property. That's what I've been talking about, not, not the PG&E-owned property.
Got it. In that situation, I think there is a process for the urban forester to prepare a map for the council, but she will still have to identify individual trees that qualify as landmark tree, but that's, that's basically a technical part of the job.
So I would see, like to see something brought, I would like to see this sooner than later. So if we're going to be talking about in, on October 24th, I, I, I think, you know, this has been going on for a couple of years, so I'd like to see it happen sooner than later.
Steve, are you, Mr. Wong, are you saying that, that the council can declare without specifically designating trees?
The council can declare-
Just declare geographic area?
But the, the city arborist, according to the code, still has to identify which tree within this group of trees are landmark trees. There's no landmark grove in the code, it's a group of trees or a tree that can qualify as a landmark tree. So individual tree that's a landmark tree in this area, this group of trees still has to be identified.
But is that what we're doing for the prison, aren't we just saying that that's a landmark grove? Are we individually mapping those?
No.
So what's the difference between the two?
Are we adding a grove definition to the city code?
Yes. And to answer Aquino's question, we don't have the same obstacle with the stakeholder situation where utility companies are coming through and removing trees. For the Oak Parkway Trail Corridor, in certain situations, it's appropriate for trees to be removed. And that's kind of a characteristic that's unique to that corridor as opposed to the prison grove.
If I also may add something to it, there is a reason why the council adopted the, the tree ordinance, including the landmark tree designation because there are special protections for landmark trees. And hence, the public needs to know which tree is a landmark tree and, and which trees are not landmark trees. And hence, you can provide direction to the city arborist, the urban forester, as to your desire, but she still has to identify what trees qualify as landmark trees.
Meaning you're going to have to do that for the prison grove?
I don't see how she-
PG&E is a MacGuffin, it doesn't really matter that they like to cut them down.
All the trees are going to be considered protected.
And she can make that determination, all those trees.
Are, are all the trees on the prison grove, are they oak trees?
Primarily blue oak and interior live oak, there are some buckeye, there's elderberries, there's willows. In my tour there, they seemed pretty clear of invasives, which was- In my tour there, they seemed pretty, um, clear of invasives, which was really promising, which was, which was really good.
Okay. I have a question for Councilmember Kozlowski. So whether it is a grove and identifying trees to be landmark or to either look at the actual, um, trail and identify the trees that are considered protected, that we can consider a landmark, is it the same thing, kind of? Or do you think the grove gives a better value to protect them?
Yeah, in the context of the way that the code is written currently, we need to protect individual trees if we want to protect individual trees. Okay? When we started this discussion, I asked the question, what constitutes a grove, right? And what protection are we giving to a grove? Okay? I'm suggesting that, I, I'm making the recommendation to my colleagues and everyone that a grove means that there are protected trees and it is the discretion of the urban forester to determine what those are and map them so that individual trees have the protection of landmark status and less valuable trees can continue to exist in the grove, but don't get the exact same protection. That's what I'm suggesting.
Okay.
So.
So your mapping exercise will be necessary to identify which deserve that protection. But I, I, I'm just suggesting that the change to the codes that we can have the definition of a grove be something along the lines of what I just described, what would be sensible. And then we can designate the groves and you'll have the, you have more time to carefully identify which trees.
Well, and although the word grove, I don't think is mentioned, it does say that we can establish by resolution, a tree or group of trees as a landmark tree.
But we would be conferring on that group of trees landmark status in all of its definition. So that's why I'm suggesting that we need to add a, the word grove to our ordinance so that we can designate a geographic area that has trees in it that are generally landmarked. But then that has to come along with a map, not unlike what we do with parcels, that identifies individual designations.
I have a question, Amy, about, sometimes I take power walks over by Vista Delago High School and there's, I don't know if that's a grove, but there's a neighborhood that has just so many oak trees and they're so beautiful and they're on, do you guys know where I'm talking about?
Lakeview Oaks.
What is it?
Lakeview Oaks.
Lakeview Oaks. And are those, are those groves protected? And, and I mean, I know there are oak trees and they're protected, but are they, are those groves? Just for my sake of my own.
Clearly that, that, the one that's at the corner of Golf Links and, and, uh, in front of Vista Delago, shh, meets the, it's exactly, it's exactly analogous to what's on the prison property. It's mostly on a piece of parkland though, the park that's right there.
Well, some are HOA and PG&E has tried to take out others too.
Community as well.
So there are other areas in Folsom that could ultimately get this designation.
Yeah. I have one quick clarification, Amy. Thank you again. I follow what my colleagues are saying, but you got a list from A, PG&E, they want to cut down 17 trees in the same area.
Seventeen oak trees.
Seventeen oak trees. And you sent back 10 are not the candidates. I'm trying to see, you know, we're talking 30 days here, you already got the notice and they have in their back, back pocket, uh, CPUC tool, they can use that anytime. So what, how, what we are trying to solve here, right, for quickly?
Yeah, so, um, since, you know, the, the drama of two years ago, they've, they've been a lot softer.
Yeah.
And they've been a lot more collaborative. So last year, for example, it was kind of a similar situation. They gave us a proposed work scope. They were very communicative. And then we did a site meeting with them and ultimately they did remove some of the trees off their work scope based on, based on staff analysis and that site meeting. And so far this year, a similar process is, um, materializing. Um, so I've sent them back our comments and I did hear back from their vegetation management, manager, uh, just yesterday. And I anticipate that we're going to set up a meeting in the near future, in the next week or two.
Right.
Um, and similar results, I anticipate that they're going to work with us on our comments based on, you know, some of the trees can reasonably be pruned and others, like I mentioned earlier, kind of a hard argue when they're right under the lowest sad point.
Yeah. Are they working with us or are they doing water torture on us? And just asking for the same trees to be cut down year after year after year until we cave?
Uh, you know, it's, they have backed off on the larger trees, it seems, since a few years back.
Yeah.
Having said that, for lack of more politically correct terms, it is, I would say, probably death by a thousand cuts.
Okay. So as predicted, when we started this whole journey with them, all right.
So, yeah, I, I agree that.
I renew my suggestion.
Yeah, there are opportunities for landmark.
Landmark status for all those trees until you determine which ones don't deserve landmark status. And then we hold their, you know, we continue to negotiate as we have been with them. But as I said, I think the, the additional protection just raises the temperature a little bit for them when we call them on the carpet publicly.
Right. And to kind of slingshot that into a question aimed at our city attorney. In this instance, um, if we do do a blanket landmark, um, designation on this corridor and in this situation right now where they come with a proposed work scope and the city arborist, um, agrees and we come to, uh, um, a compromise, how, how does that work with the way the code is built now? I, I.
I'm not entirely sure. That's a very good question. I'm not entirely sure the answer because I need to see what is being discussed and, and also consider how would I conform with our code requirements. Right now, we're deviating from what the code basically says, but I am capturing the council's intent and I think, um, city staff can work towards that intent. But when the time comes, um, in dealing with PG&E, for example, uh, trying to trim or remove a landmark tree, then we need to make sure that the city arborist's determination is not arbitrary or capricious, that there are some reasons backing up her determination, this particular tree or a group of trees is a legitimate landmark tree deserving extra layer protection as opposed to just blank hitting everything in that corridor without any legitimate basis that would weaken our position even more. We don't want that. We want to make sure that we have a strong position and a good posture in dealing with PG&E. So I have to see what that comes about. I, I'm, I'm not entirely comfortable with what the staff is proposing, um, without seeing what the discussion and, and the scope of the maintenance might entail. But I think we can, um, work with PG&E however that is.
Yeah, but ultim- ultimately, the, as I said earlier, the CPUC's rules about power line safety supersede everything that we might do.
Yeah.
The only advantage we're buying ourselves is that if, and I don't have any problem saying this publicly, if we call the Channel 3 News and say, hey, PG&E won't budge and they want to cut this beautiful tree down and it's a historic landmark tree that we've designated, the city council here in Folsom, that's a better story than just they want to trim trees and we don't want them to trim trees. So we're buying ourselves some points in the court of public opinion, that's all. And I recognize that, but I want it.
Okay. I just have one more question. So the, the trees on the prison property, fast forward 10, 15 years from now, state of California designates this land as for housing, are those trees now protected?
Uh, y- yes. So, uh, CDCR shares in this, shares in city, in the city's position in not wanting that. And so that was one of the considerations that they had in their, um, excitement at the prospect of having this added layer of.
Got it.
Yeah, of protection.
Got it. Okay, very good. Any other questions for Amy? No, we do, we do have, uh, public comments?
Bruce Klein.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Bruce Klein, 32-year resident of the city of Folsom, a lover of that trail and, uh, vice president of the Friends of Folsom Parkway. Thanks very much, uh, Amy, for the great recap and it's particularly warming that, uh, Friends of the Folsom Parkway in 1999 does, um, moved to designate, uh, the grove, they call it a grove in their application, um, the trees between Blue Ravine and about Bidwell Street when the RT corridor was going in. On a 5-0 vote, um, the city council designated all of those trees as landmark trees. Fun reading, here's the minutes, um, that they typed out in detail with all the great comments by various council members. Super fun reading and, and great to be, uh, back as an advocate for Friends of the Folsom Parkway, uh, many, many years later. I wrote down on my notes to make comments, death by a thousand cuts. So Amy, thanks for throwing that one out there. And hats off to the city for, you know, stepping up and protecting, uh, our trees. We know for a fact that staff will change at PG&E and we're thankful that they got the message that the council delivered strongly to them. And we're thankful for Amy also for pushing back. There's three trees that are in about the middle of the corridor that, uh, close to the tree that Mayor Rodriguez lives near. And those three trees PG&E wanted to take out. Amy pushed back hard on them. And you walk down and now look at those trees and they, this last year with rain, it looks real, they look really nice, really nice. And they should never have been taken out. They should never have been cut back like they were. But we should absolutely pursue a landmark designation for this and thank you, council, for urging, uh, not urging or hopefully directing staff to know, we're not going to study it further. We're not going to, uh, come back at a later date. We want them done and we want them done now. And I don't think it's that hard, honestly, to identify what trees there are. The, in 1999, there was a water pipeline project and they, there was a full EIR done by ECOR. And here's the tree survey for that corridor. And it identifies each of the trees and how big they are and what their condition is. And, uh, great to hear about the oracle oaks that are in that corridor because there's several. And, um, as Amy said, they are rare within the city. And there's two of them in that corridor and they're identified right here in this document. One of them happens to be right behind my house. So when the goats came through this last year, I did a really good job fencing it up to make sure that the goats couldn't eat that precious oracle oak tree. And I think there's only two in that corridor. So that's the reason why we want to designate the group of trees and include all of those trees, not just the big giant beautiful heritage ones. Those trees all will grow up and I've watched great progress of those trees in that corridor over the last three or four, five years, even after the goats come through, boom, all of a sudden they grow back. And those little trees form a great canopy for a lot of the other ones. Other older trees will die off, these will grow up. These pose no danger whatsoever to those power lines. It will be decades before, will all be gone before they can ever get close to the swing of those trees. And so there was a lot of discussion, the staff report about PG&E, there has been discussion tonight. And I, I applaud them and I applaud the efforts of Sheriff McGuinness, talking to their CEO and just saying, hey, get a win here. And he did a great job on that. But staff will change, guaranteed it will change. And my wife worked for PG&E and she saw it every year. And so, um, you know, um, Councilmember Kozlowski, you're very right. It's like, we want every tool in our toolbox and we want to make sure that when they want to go cut a tree down in the area that we've said is landmark, that they're going to come to us and explain why. There's nothing in the landmark tree ordinance or designation that adversely affects their ability to do what we want them to do and to keep our community safe.
Just time check.
Yes, they can trim. There are standards with, with, with respect to what they need to do to trim. They have emergency abilities to take out trees when it's adversely affecting a line. The fire chief can direct them to take one out as necessary. So nothing is there. So I urge you to ask staff to move this very quickly back. Our Friends of the Folsom Parkway will take the PG&E list of the ones that they wanted to cut. Here's their survey already done and their environmental document already done. We'll walk through it with you and we could have it back in 30 days, guaranteed. I'm not going to put that timeline on them, but the work is there and thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So any other comments or questions or, um, Amy, is there clarity on direction?
I, yeah, I do want to clarify, um, whether, um, this council would like to move forward on the prison grove to initiate that. And then based on all this conversation about the Oak Parkway Trail Corridor, whether or not we want more analysis, the, um, the mapping that Mr. Klein just spoke of is for about half of the corridor between the, the water treatment plant and about BT Collins Park. And then there is the other half beyond that that goes all to way, all the way to Blue Ravine. So, yeah, with that, I would appreciate some direction from this council and how to move forward on that.
I'll give my direction. Um, I'm for the prison property, moving forward with that. I'm also for, uh, moving forward with the oak, uh, oak. Parkway trail, um, working with Folsom Parkway, I think, um, and then extending their volun, maybe helping, asking them to help with the extended part that you just mentioned. Um, giving you maybe an update in 30 days when you bring the prison back. And then with the idea that we could have this done and I'm not going to put a huge time limit on it, but like another 60 days or something. So, um, that would be my direction.
Vice Mayor Chalantura?
I'm nodding my head, you know, so strong here. I really want to save the trees. But at the same time, in the last two years, PG&E changed. That's what the observation I have. Yes, we can put these protected land trees, you know, from our back pocket. They do have something, probably bigger one. I don't think so whether they have to come to city council also if they decide to cut with the CPUC. That's where I'm looking at right now. Do we want to generate that conflict here while they are working with us? Two years ago, it was different. I agree. I was walking with Mr. Bruce Klein. I said, no, I can speak loud and all those, but they changed after so much efforts. That's where I am. Is this going to put more fuel to that relationship and they use that power?
You know, I can, I can speak from, and, and I have the contact if you wanted to give her a call. But there is, um, a, a great interest to work with us, to protect those trees. Was that what you would get? I mean, they, they're, they're wanting to partner with us. They, they, their customer service right now is incredibly strong.
Yeah, I think we need to be kind of strategic on our messaging to them. You know, so we don't, we don't create a perceived conflict or undermine the, the positive progress we've made in our relationship with them. So I don't disagree with your concern.
Right. A prison, I'm okay. You know, they're our good friends, so they work with us. But I'm, I'm a little bit cautious on the, on the, um, the other one.
So, uh, Vice Mayor, are you saying, don't, don't do anything?
No, no. Um, you're working already with them. Don't call that as a grove protected right away within next 30 days that we are telling them, you come to the red carpet. If even you want to cut one, that's what we are telling them right now while they are working with us.
Well, we don't have to get permission from PG&E to consider the, the grove as landmark, correct?
No, 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 that's not my point. Once we decide it is, this grove is protected within 30 days, 90 days, whatever that time, then the way we are talking, they have to come here to explain why they are cutting a tree. It is designated as a landmark. If things are working right now, I'd rather want to, um, develop that friendship and relationship and strengthen that, that trust. Uh, I hear, uh, uh, you know, Bruce's words, his wife is working there, they can change anytime. I don't think so. We are at that point right now. They are working with us and they do have a, a job to do, public safety.
Correct. And throughout the corridor, there are some trees that I agree, um, need to be preserved.
They need to be pruned, not removed. They're significant in size. They've been there a long time. They've kind of earned their right to be there with, but there's a lot of gray area too with smaller trees. And again, that's kind of where it gets messy. And again, I agree that they are working with us. They've gone from being combative to collaborative. So, yeah, it's.
My view is, I think we can hold on to the second one, you know, not to jump on to classify that as a protected grove since we are working with them in a collaborative way.
Nothing about this discussion that's intended to be antagonistic towards PG&E. They have the absolute right to do their safety work regardless of what we do. Okay, I'll just restate that. We are, we have the right to do what we want to do also. And neither one of us should be capricious in our decision making. So to your point, Mr. City Attorney, if we identify trees that have deserved the right to continue to be where they are, we should identify those, but not in a capricious way. So I don't think that we're doing anything to antagonize them or to sour the collaboration that's going on. It is simply us being sensible about what's important. And the community was extremely loud and clear about what it is that they felt about this particular grove of trees. And we should protect it whenever we get the chance. So that's why I am a yes on both, all three groves.
May I ask?
Soon as possible. And if I can, I'm sorry, if I can, if I can take one more breath to let you form your thought, I do think we need to add a grove designation to the ordinance so that the trees within a grove receive default landmark status until the city arborist or urban, urban forester has identified ones that are of lesser value and takes them off of that designation.
So, Madam Mayor, for purpose of this item, may I ask clarification on the staff's request pertaining to the prison property trees? What is the council's desire? What's the council's direction?
Move forward.
Yes.
Go.
And with respect to the trees and the group of trees along the Oak Parkway Trail Corridor on city property, what is the city's council's direction and desire?
Move forward.
Move forward.
Move forward, 60 days.
Can we, is it possible to just declare that as a landmark grove? And then if you want to come back and say we can declassify?
Exactly what I'm suggesting. I agree with you completely.
There's certain ones that we can declassify, fine.
Grove gives default status to everything until you map it and determine which ones don't deserve landmark status individually.
I, I hear that's what the council's saying, except that's not how the current ordinance works.
So we need to change the ordinance first.
Change the ordinance, bring that to us also.
So before the ordinance is changed, we need to identify, we need to identify landmark trees or group of trees that deserve a landmark tree designation, correct?
Well, why, so why doesn't the code work that way? Why can't you just say this group of trees? And it's the whole, I mean.
We can, except we still need to make sure that the criteria applies to all those trees. Yes, ma'am. Otherwise it would be arbitrary.
But it only has to be one of the four things, right? You don't have to have all four things.
Correct.
Okay. Well, that doesn't seem too hard. Okay.
So when would we do that part? The municipal code?
May I propose that on the October 24 meeting, we present a proposed revision specific to that portion of the code ahead of the other small edits that we intend to make at a future date.
Okay.
To address these issues that we're talking about at this meeting.
Is a month necessary to add two sentences that define what a, that a grove is a geographic area and all trees within it are considered landmark at the discretion of the urban forester?
If, yes, because one month from now, the staff reports for your next meeting are due tomorrow.
Well, while it's fresh in your mind, let's write it tonight. As soon as we get done here.
So that's fair. I mean, we can't expect them to do the staff report tonight if it's due tomorrow for the next meeting, so.
But, but just for my clarity, so in the meantime, within 60 days, we'll have back here the grove with the designation of which trees will be considered landmark. Is that correct? Knowing, I mean, I know we'll, we'll work on the municipal code, but knowing that within 60 days, we'll hear back and have those identified?
I think we're trying to go the opposite.
I think we're.
The whole thing is protected except for these.
Cover both situations, okay? The prison, the prison groves are going to receive landmark status for every tree as a result of being in the grove geographically. I'm suggesting that the Oak Trail or the Oak Parkway Trail Corridor can similarly receive that broad designation and all trees until it is mapped and they are designated elsewise.
Okay, so that's what I was asking.
Receive landmark status.
Yeah, that's what, and but that will happen.
That's the more straightforward way to amend the.
And that will happen within 60 days.
No, that can happen on October 24th.
Yeah.
If we amend the code and then vote on the groves, right? And then we can map the groves if we choose to, to exclude things from having full landmark status.
I, I think we understand the direction of the city council and we will get back to you in a month with one or more solutions that you've directed this evening. I'm confident we can do that in coordination with the city attorney's office.
A quick question, Pam. So how this discussion helps you on the 17 trees notice you got from city, PG&E? You guys already received 17 trees they're going to be doing.
That process isn't going to change right now because it's not a different designation. But we hear you. I think we understand your direction and we will probably come back to you with two things, both the grove designation and the fix to the ordinance at the same time on the 24th of October.
As a suggestion or as an action item?
As an action item.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you so much, Council and Mayor, for your time.
Yeah.
All right, well, the clerk, please call the next item.
The next item is new business item 12, resolution number 11102, a resolution of consideration of the city council, the city of Folsom to amend the rate of method and of apportionment for improvement area number six within the city of Folsom Community Facilities, District number 23, Folsom Ranch and related matters.
Good evening, Stacy.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. This should just be a brief presentation for you here. This item is to request, it's a request from certain landowners in the Folsom plan area to amend improvement area number six. This is within CFD 23. Landowners within the Folsom plan area previously requested to form this CFD back in 2020. It does include seven separate improvement areas and they're designated as improvement area one through improvement area seven. On July 26th of last year, an amendment to the rate and method of apportionment for improvement area six was approved to remove the maximum special tax for facilities for certain land uses. And now they are asking to do this again and further amend the rate and method of apportionment for improvement area six. And this will remove the maximum facility special tax rate from the remaining taxable land use category. This is a fairly small development. There's nine acres of multifamily, multi-density, multifamily, medium density. There's 8.54 acres of multifamily, high density and 9.99 acres of non-residential property. And this proposal here, you'll see in this chart that right now, the multifamily attached property for medium density is the only one that still has the facility special tax. And so they're asking to remove that so that there is zero facility special tax in this improvement area of CFD 23. There's no proposed amendments to the maximum services special tax rates, so those will continue. And so with that, staff does recommend approval of this resolution, number 11102.
All right, any questions for Stacy?
Oh, I'll move adoption of resolution number 11102.
If we don't need public comment, I'll second.
Are there any requests to speak?
I have no request to speak.
Okay.
Second.
All right, will the clerk please call the role?
Councilmembers Aquino?
Yes.
Chalan Charla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes. Will the clerk, will the clerk please call the next item?
The next item is consider, new business item, consideration of the selection of two city council members to serve on the economic development consultant proposal review committee.
Okay. Good evening, Christine.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. I'm Christine Brainard, Communications Director and Acting Assistant City Manager. Tonight, we are requesting the city council to consider the selection of two council members to serve on the economic development consultant review committee. On May 23rd, the city council unanimously approved its fiscal year 2023-24 budget. And to support economic development within the city, the council recognized the importance of engaging external expertise. And so a consensus of the, as a consensus of the city council requested that up to $100,000 be dedicated to an economic development consultant contract. So on June 27th, the council provided direction on the consultant's goals and scope of work. And at this meeting, it was discussed, but a consensus was not reached regarding the potential involvement of two city council members in the proposal evaluation process.
I believe it was, the consensus was reached, that, that's what I remember. Anyways, go on.
Okay. So following the council direction and approval, staff prepared an RFP for consulting services and that RFP was distributed to a targeted list of economic development consultants as well as to a database, a statewide database of over 100 consultants. The RFP was also noticed in the Folsom Telegraph. It was issued on August 9th and the submission deadline is this Friday, September 15th at 2:00 PM. The RFP advertised, the RFP advertised that the proposals would be evaluated by Friday, September 29th. And the proposals will be evaluated by an economic development consultant selection committee that includes the city manager, community development director, myself, Joe Galliardi with President and CEO of Choose Folsom, and an external committee member who will be an economic development staff member from the city of Elk Grove. And tonight, city staff recommends that the city council discuss and consider, consider the selection of two council members to serve on the economic development consultant proposal review committee. And we look forward to your feedback. Thank you.
So, thank you, Christine. So just kind of two decision points for the city council. The first one was, yes, it did come up at the, at that meeting, the idea that two council members would serve on the committee. We did go back and watch it. We didn't really see that, you know, there was an affirmation of a consensus. So first wanted to check with you if that is indeed the consensus that you want two council members to serve. And then secondly, if that's the case, who are those two? And we can do, if, if it is your agreement to have two, we can do the usual kind of balloting process if you prefer, or if you just already are, you know, kind of set on who you'd like on it. So maybe we could start with the first question.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I would like to serve on the panel interviews for this.
I think the two names were mentioned were you and myself. Yeah.
Are you good with that? Okay.
Anybody, everybody good with Mayor Rodriguez and Councilmember Rorba? Okay.
Okay.
It shall be.
All right, thank you. All right. Will the clerk, are we done with that one? Yeah. Will the clerk please call the next item?
Next item is council request for future agenda items.
I don't have any. Okay, will the clerk please call the next item?
Next item, city manager reports.
Thank you. The gallery at 48 Natoma's new exhibit features larger-than-life glass and metal flowers by a local artist, amazing trompe l'oeil watercolors and incredible applique textile pieces. So when you get a chance, please drop by the Folsom Senior and Art Center. The art exhibits continue through November 8th. Hard to believe that I have an item here on the holidays. Volunteer decorators and carolers are needed for the Folsom City Zoo Sanctuary's Holiday Lights event. Groups, families and individuals are needed to help hang thousands of feet of sparkling lights along the fences and grounds of the zoo sanctuary. Decorating dates begin early in November and you can register today at folsom.ca.us/holidaylightsvolunteer. And the Folsom Renaissance Fair returns. This living history event transports guests back in time to a 16th century English village with hundreds of costumed entertainers, artisan craftsmen, wares and a variety of tasty food and drink. The fair takes place in Folsom City Lions Park from 10 to 5, September 23rd through the 24th. And you can get tickets at Folsom Fair, that's F-A-I-R-E.com. And I look forward to very much to seeing everyone at Community Service Day this Saturday. It's hard to believe it's the 10th annual event.
All right, Councilmember Aquino?
Uh, no report.
Councilmember Kozlowski?
Couple of things. I just want to point out that the funk queen that was here earlier tonight, I did a little Wikipedia search afterwards and she is unique in the world of music in that she was a member of both Sly and the Family Stone and Parliament Funkadelic, which is pretty amazing. So there's some Spotify homework for everybody.
And she also mentioned the Gap Band.
The Gap Band. And then she also, Rolling Stone made her album that she did with two other people for the band at the time called The Brides of Funkenstein, an album called Never Buy Texas From a Cowboy. So that's what I'm going to listen to as soon as we get done here tonight. Rolling Stone said it was one of the coolest albums of all time. In terms of real business, we kind of blew past council request for future done, agenda items. We got some public comment earlier today about having a discussion about the circumstances under which we would potentially place a sales tax measure on the ballot. We need to bring that forward sooner rather than later. I know that it's an unpleasant discussion, perhaps politically, but we have a serious issue that we need to deal with by attacking it on all sides. That means economic development, so that for long-term health, that means considering service cuts if we don't do something else. That means looking at procurement strategies potentially. And it means additional revenue from sales tax in the way that all of our neighboring communities have done.
So at our last, at our last city council meeting at council, at that section, I did request that we bring something to the council where we would talk about this and.
I'm just reiterating that. We need to do it sooner rather than later. I actually, when we shut this down last September, I said we need to bring this back in January so that there's adequate time for somebody to make those decisions and then run a campaign of education if necessary.
I agree.
And we are well past January, so it's time to.
I agree. I agree, but the feedback was we were going to take it in piecemeals, which I don't necessarily agree with. I think we should just come back and have a study session just for time, time sake?
We don't have.
We're talking about a couple of different things. We were talking about the budget and just backing up, is, is there a consensus of you that you want an item on the discussion of a possible sales tax measure?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Kozlowski, is that a yes? Anybody else, is that a yes?
Were sales, because we don't know if it's a, we don't know if it's a sales tax or a special sales tax or.
The nature of it can be part of that discussion. We have to make a decision about whether this council can support putting a measure on the ballot or if we are going to rely on the community to try and do that. So we either need to make a decision or punt, one of the two.
It would be noticed as consideration of a possible sales tax measure.
Yes.
Okay. Are there two others that want to hear that?
For the sake of discussion, I'll support it.
I don't mind having a discussion. That's fine.
Okay. We will bring that back.
But so, so sales taxes, I mean, that creates angst with people because it may not necessarily be angst because it could, you know, I think in the last meeting I mentioned, you know, it could actually even be a special sales tax. And a special sales tax is very different from a sales tax. A special sales tax could address our issues when it comes to public safety, you know, the strategic plan, that goals that we have that all need money, economic development. We have parks and rec and transportation. So, I mean, it encompasses several, so can we have, can the title of it be?
I, I just want to, I want to be real careful here because this isn't noticed to have a sales tax conversation and we're, and this is veering off into like a back and forth, you know, very respectfully. And we don't want to, you know, get offline here. So I'm watching my attorney. So it, what I heard was we wanted to hear an item on a possible sales tax measure. Elements of that, that I would intend to bring back is, you know, how do we compare? We've actually brought this a few times actually, but we could, you know, bring the information again and, and update anything. How do we compare to other jurisdictions? What does it look like? We had the difference between a general tax and a special tax in terms of the thresholds and, and how it would change our budget in terms of annual revenues if it were to pass. Reminders of the data we've gathered from our community as to how they feel about a sales tax measure and, and how it could be used. So that's what I'm hearing. And if there are at least two of you that want to do that. And if there are at least two of you that want to do that, then, then I can do that.
If I'm not wrong, Mike, besides sales tax, I know you mentioned procurement, you know, certain things. Are we going to bring the topics? I know, I know, city attorney, I know. What can we talk, what we can't talk on this dais right now?
How about a plan for the, how about a plan for the financial projected referrals?
If I can just make a suggestion, there are four ways to us getting additional revenue or reducing our expenses, right? Procurement is a potential way to reduce our expenses. Service cuts is the other way, okay? Revenue, it's economic development by growing the pie, right? Or it's direct revenue from a sales tax measure. That's what we have in our control, those four things. I don't want to muddy the water too much. The sales tax measure decision is one that is time-sensitive because elections come on specific dates, and we're getting close to the point where we won't be able to do an effective education campaign if we don't make a decision soon.
I'm open for this.
I have no problem on the four items. Please add two more items. This is my request. Revenue generation from the existing properties city is managing and the grant proposals, how well city is holding the grants and success of the grants.
That's fair.
May I just ask for further clarification? To narrow the scope of the future agenda item, is the council's desire to have a potential revenue measure be placed on a future agenda item or a very broad future revenue source discussion? A very specific topic or very broad discussion?
And not, it sounded like the very broad would not just be revenues, but cost-cutting. So it's specific to the sales tax measure or more broad?
To me, it is more broad because what's in our toolkit, first fix it, then if it is the worst case, specific sales tax, then yes.
A little specific.
We can have two, why can't we have two agenda items? One, you, you want to do yours, you know, quicker, and I understand why. And you want a bigger discussion on if we don't go towards the sales tax, what are other options? Or maybe that's before the sales tax. But I think you're time, you're, you're, you're time-sensitive is what you're talking about. My, I would be for it if we're talking about what would we need to do to consider this? Not just, are we going to do it as a council and discuss it, which we need to do, so this is the right place? But what do we need to know to consider it? And what, what are the next steps then? You know, is it getting a consultant? Is it surveying? And I know we talked about that at our agenda review, but, so that would be part of the detail I want.
And that's how I visualize it. If, if, you know, I want to go back to that what Mr. Wong asked. But yes, if we brought back the item on a sales tax measure, it would be describing all the things I mentioned earlier. And yes, and here are the steps forward if you're interested in moving forward. It would not be a decision point at that moment of yes or no on the ballot, if that's what you're asking, but that's premature. So if we, I could respectfully ask, just me, again, are, is, is there at least three of you that would have that conversation, you know, discussing consideration of a potential sales tax measure and, you know, next steps or direction, something like that?
Sure, I'm up for discussion.
Sooner than later.
Okay, yes.
Okay, excellent. Second topic, while I'm monopolizing the dais. The, the, a number of things have kind of come into focus for me a little bit. And I think the use of the Y property, the ability for us to gather some funding to repair the station master house, is that what it's called?
Superintendent's.
Superintendent's House. And then also the ability to invite the county to provide some public health services here in Folsom. I think the Y property might be a good nexus for all three of those things to happen. And I'd like to see if we can't have a future agenda item somewhat soon to discuss principally first steps, which would be removing public works, storage material from the Y property, negotiating with the PSVRR folks to organize the stuff that they have on that property so that we can determine what's available, and then have a discussion with the public health services from the county. So it's kind of those three things in that order. But it's just a general discussion to be able to give the staff some direction on whether to go that route or not. So I hope that we could have a discussion of that on our, one of our agendas coming soon.
Yep, I, I support this.
Okay, excellent. And then, last, just fun thing. John Lane, who is one of the residents of the historic district and a dedicated paddler on Lake Natoma, also works for Tykert Aggregates. And Tykert is the, is the, they mine gravel in Marysville on a scale that is hard to understand unless you see it in person. That area is lovingly called the Yuba Gold Fields and is effectively a layer, something like 10 to 20 feet thick, of tailings that were washed down from the Sierra because of hydraulic mining. So it was actually gold mined by people blowing mountains up, up in the Sierra. It washed down the Yuba River and then spread out when it hit flatland all over the area around Marysville. And Tykert is now the third processor of this because in the early, right around World War I, dredges were set loose to process all of that gravel that had washed down from the Sierras to get gold out of it a second time. And now, Tykert is actually taking the gravel that was washed by all those dredges and crushing it to use for road aggregate. But the cool thing that happened is this morning, I got to do a tour of the last floating dredge in California, which is sitting in the middle of those gold fields in Marysville. And it is Titanic in scale. It is so big. And if you go to the Folsom History Museum, there, it's a long way to get to this. In the Folsom History Museum, there is a remarkable scale model of a dredge so that you can get a sense of how these things work. But effectively, it is a gigantic chainsaw that cuts through the ground to scoop all the dirt up and then sort it out and pull gold out of the ground. And one of them remains in California. It's still floating on its pond up in Maryville. And it's really cool. And I have lots of pictures if anybody ever wants to see them. That is all. Thank you very much for indulging me.
All right. Councilmember Lorba?
I don't have anything except I missed the Public Service Awards that was done by our, the nighttime rotary. And I just want to congratulate every winner, everyone that was recognized. We have great public safety in our city. And the 9/11 event, once again, was wonderful. There were people that came from around, outside of the city, I mean, and they just wanted to be around people that were honoring and celebrating with us. So that was wonderful. So thank you for doing that again.
Vice Mayor Chalum Chirla?
I echo about the 9/11. Chief Casano and Chief Hillman, you know, it's a remembrance. It's in our hearts, and the people are talking about it, and people are appreciating what we are doing, that remembrance. No one will forget that day. Thank you again for doing that one. Our Community Service Day is up here. I think as, you know, you all might have heard, you know, if you want these t-shirts, you know, public, please get on, you know, again. But other important one, though, the food drive. You don't have to go and donate, you know, most of you, you know, you, you do that. But right now, you can just make those food packets ready and put it in front of your house generously. You know, that's, that's my request because as the presentation said, generous donations will serve one year, one year-long food supplies to those really needed people. Food is the basic need for anybody to live. It's my request, otherwise, you know, thank you again. Good night, Folsom.
Well, I'm really excited about Community Service Day. And I just want to mention that Twin Lakes Food Bank is a recipient of the food that is collected. And in having conversations with the executive director and some other team, the food bank now serves three times the amount of individuals than from a few years ago, which is saying that their families and our elderly are in, are some of their great, some of their big customers. We also got an email from Ride Free RT Program, which offers fare-free transit for youth and students in TK through 12. And this is for students, and they can ride SAC RT buses, light rail, Smart RT Ride, On Demand, microtransit services, they're all free. To get a pass, we, students can pick them up at the high schools, middle schools, the public libraries, and the SAC RT customer service in Sacramento. I'm really excited about this Friday. The Sacramento Hispanic Chamber of Commerce is having their second annual State of Hispanic, and I'm feeling really honored to co-chair this with Dr. Pimentel. And I'm just really pleased that Folsom Lake College chose to do this. And so it'll be a busy Friday morning here in the city of Folsom. And I also want to let people know that, well, as Snooks we heard from earlier, they're having their 60th anniversary on Sutter Street. Tickets are still available for that evening, and all of the proceeds do go to the Green Room at the Depot Building. Friday, September 22nd is the Mayor's Cup, and I think there are still a couple of spots left, but it is going to be another exciting year. And then lastly, Choose Folsom is hosting their Women's Conference on Thursday, October 5th. And they always do such a great job of bringing in dynamic speakers to speak to our residents. And with that, we will close tonight's meeting at 8:31 PM.
Yes, ma'am.